Good evening, everyone. It being seven o'clock and all present, I'm going to call this September 24th meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board to order. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 28th, 2025, this meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so either in person or via the Zoom meeting application. Information for participation remotely is available on the town's website. Our first item on the agenda this evening are administrative notes. We have no minutes, so we'll move to covenants, plans, and releases. First is PB-666, ADM Agowam Development LLC, endorsement of plans for use, Area 14, release of covenants map 117, lots 4-508 through lot Do I have any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Donaldson to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Grandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. As we're all present, hands should be sufficient. All in favor? It is unanimous. Next, we have PB-667, ADM Agowam Development LLC, endorsement of plans for use, Area 16, release of covenants map 115, lots 1-579 through lot 1-590. Questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion from Mr. Grandy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Mand. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? We have a Form A plan as well, A4903, ADM Agowam Development LLC, lot line adjustment, map 117, lots A-65, A-66, S-60 through S-69, and 4-576R. Questions from the board?
Could Mr. Hartman explain the purpose of this just on record?
Mr. Hartman has crashed.
Never mind.
So this was an A&R plan, approval not required, that's been submitted for the AD make piece. We do have the engineer surveyor here if you have questions. What's happening here is there's been a series of CRs that have been put on property, permanently protecting land. They're consolidating those properties and removing, there are several pieces of these lots that are open space but not subject to a CR. They're part of the neighborhood open spaces. So you see a number of smaller pieces along the ridge that abut some of the house housing neighborhoods. Those will be permanently protected open space through the village open space development. And then the other pieces are just consolidating all of the CR properties into larger lots. Again, no change in anything except really this is for record keeping.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Grandy to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Donaldson. Discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Next on our agenda this evening, we have a public hearing continued from July 23rd, 2025, which is B535, 37 Sleepy Hollow Drive. And we have a request for a continuance. This was submitted to us in writing from counsel for the applicant and was announced and put on our agenda as an anticipated continuance. Do we have any, let me ask staff, is there anything that we need to know further?
No, we would recommend a continuation to October 8th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. We have a request for a continuance to a time specific. Do I have a motion?
Motion to continue.
I have a motion from Mr. Grandy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Mand. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. The matter is continued till October 8th at 7:00 PM. For those leaving, please do so quietly. The meeting is continuing. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA 4188, 63-65 Aubrey Street, Matthew Sheridan Home Builders, a special permit required per Section 203-9C to expand or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use. We are advisory to the ZBA on this, so this is an advisory opinion from the planning board only. Good evening.
Good evening. Matt Sheridan, Sheridan Home Builders. Tonight, I'm here to present a very brief presentation on what we're proposing at 6365 Aubrey Street. For people that aren't familiar with this particular parcel, it's next to Mary Lou's and the eye doctor on Aubrey Street, essentially adjacent to the Rotary and right across the street from the Registry of Deeds. Again, I have my entire team here tonight, my operations director, Shelley Blake, attorney Rob D'Ambruzzo, and Kevin Flaherty with Flaherty and Stefani as the engineer. Tonight, I'm proposing to the board to construct one apartment building with 11 units and one medical office building. 10 of the units will be market units, and one will be affordable. Each apartment will consist of one bedroom, and the medical building's going to be about 4,950 square feet. As part of many of our other projects, we did some public outreach with this project. We got unanimous support from Plymouth Center Steering Committee. The only feedback we got from the steering committee was they asked if we could do assigned parking for the apartment building, which we had planned to do. We did a meeting with BID staff to gain feedback on what their needs are for housing. One of those meetings resulted in a survey going out to a national traveling nurse organization, and we're actually waiting for some feedback back on that survey, again, just to gain a little bit more understanding for what we might be able to do to help support BID. And lastly, we did a neighborhood meeting at the Hampton Inn this past weekend. We had a few residents come out. They expressed their concerns. I explained to them that, you know, we try to do these public forums, so that way it actually gives me a chance to interact with the neighbors and really talk and identify their needs and concerns. The feedback from that meeting was we moved the building forward another 10 feet. I said we'd provide additional screening along the lot line, and I committed to installing approximately 200 feet of fence along the property line. I just want everybody to understand that these three improvements offers I made to the neighbors, they aren't significant in any means. They're going to be financially very costly, and with moving the building forward 10 feet, we essentially moved the building from 20 feet to 30 feet, and the setback in that area is actually 10 feet. So we feel like we made some real good concessions for the neighbors based off of their concerns. Excuse me. This is an overall site plan for what we're proposing. You can see the apartment building in the rear of the site, the medical building in the front of the site, right off of Aubrey Street. This was done with the intent that we wanted to maintain status quo on Aubrey Street with the medical facilities being right off of Aubrey Street and in the rear. That's why we situated the apartment building. You can see towards the bottom of the screen, those stars, those are actually cedar trees that we designed the site around to save, because when I went out there, I saw the trees, and I realized they'd be impossible to replace. So we actually designed the entire entrance around making sure we could save all those trees. So with our apartment building, the 10 market apartments, and I want to explain this, the 10 market apartments are actually going to be at 70% AMI. So this isn't an affordable project. This isn't an inclusionary project. This is a market project that is going to be priced at 70% AMI. Nothing like this exists in the town of Plymouth. Our affordable is also going to be priced at 70% or less AMI. All of this is coming out of my pocket. It's through what we're asking for in the units and the associated use with the medical building that I'm able to offer these deep, deep discounts on these rentals. So again, that's, it's a market building that's actually going to be at 70% AMI. In doing some investigating, we couldn't find anything even close to this in the town of Plymouth. With that pricing, we're gearing this towards BID staff, first responders, town employees, somebody that might work at North High School that wants to live closer to school. Ideal world for me is somebody's working in the medical building, and they can actually walk right across the parking lot to work every morning. And again, we saved as many of the existing trees as possible. And this picture shows some of the trees. As you can see, they're gorgeous. And I looked at a bunch of different options with if we could transplant them on the site, if we could utilize them in any way, and it wasn't worth the risk. So we actually lost property by designing the entrance off of these trees. This rendering is showing what the medical building will look like if you were standing in the parking lot looking at it. And again, extremely tastefully designed. We feel like it fits the character and the look for everything that's going on Aubrey Street right now. This is the apartment building. Same thing. We used all the same design characteristics that we used in the medical building. And you'll notice on the gable wall, there are no windows, and that was done intentionally by design, just to try to gain privacy for the folks that live in the rear of the site. And just quickly, the access and infrastructure, we're utilizing a curb cut that already exists on Aubrey Street to limit all the disturbance. All those sidewalks are relatively brand-new. Aubrey Street's had some extensive work done to it, so we didn't alter the entrance at all. We've addressed all of DPW's and Engineering's comments, so we're just waiting for the clean letter to come back. The project's being serviced by Town Water and Sewer, which we hear about all the time. When we have the existing infrastructure, we should be trying to take advantage of it. So we do have Town Water and Sewer available. And we asked for no parking waivers. So we're not asking for, to reduce the size of the spaces, the length of the spaces, or the number of spots. We actually exceeded what's required through the zoning bylaw. That's it for our presentation, so I'll turn it back to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. To staff.
So this property's on Aubrey Street. People I'm sure are very familiar with the location. Aubrey Street, just past the Registry of Deeds, the access to the hospital as well as the Plymouth North High School. So this property is located in the R25 median lot zoning district as well as the Aubrey Street overlay district. So when we look at the medical office building that's proposed in the front, that's being done through the medical, through the overlay district, and that is something that's consistent with the intent of that overlay district. I should point out, when the district was created, there was a lot of pressure for something, and the example would have been a 7-Eleven that could show up on the street, because there was commercial uses allowed on Aubrey Street. And the concern was, once you had a retail high traffic generator, that would change the neighborhood. There are a lot of people, especially just beyond the high school, it is a neighborhood still. So we created the overlay district to allow for some intensive uses such as medical office buildings, but prohibited those types of retail uses. So that's the genesis of that overlay district. And again, I think the medical office building fits very nicely into the concept that was envisioned when we went through that process a number of years ago. The second part, as pointed out, is the 11-unit multifamily that's located to the rear. That is allowed by special permit because of the existing nonconformity. The property's already nonconforming. There are two single-family homes on the lot. So they're looking to change from one nonconforming use, those two single-family homes, to another nonconforming use, which is the multifamily. And the criteria that, the main criteria that the zoning board would have to use is that that change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use. So again, you have our staff report. I think the presentation covered most everything else. And I know that there are some abutters who probably would like to speak, but again, we have our staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Okay, I'm going to open this up for public comment, as with every other comment, public comment this evening. So we're going to be doing this pursuant to the planning board's published public comment rules. That means three minutes per speaker. If you need more time, it is per vote of the planning board. You have to ask for more time. The board has to vote to grant you more time. There is one additional amount of time at most that can be allowed, because we want to make sure that A, everyone gets a chance to speak, and B, that we continue to move our meetings along, so we don't end up finishing at 1:00 AM for our poor staff, which has to get back up in early mornings, not to mention some of our board members. So is there anyone who would like to comment, who has to raise comments or questions regarding this?
And I did miss one thing. One of the comments that was raised was a concern about our prevention of light pollution bylaw. So although it's not in your report, the final report to the ZBA with your consent would say that they need to document compliance with the prevention of light pollution section of our bylaw, which is also commonly known as our dark sky bylaw.
Okay, very good. Someone wanted to come up and speak?
Good evening. My name is Joshua Hernandez, and I live at 23 Tilton Street, directly abutting the proposed project at 63 and 65 Aubrey Street. When I bought my home years ago, I fondly remember Bill Capella in the farm. And when I bought my home, I was overjoyed with it, and I knew that there was going to be development on that land. So I want to be very clear when I say that I am not outright opposing this development. But as in a butter, I face very real impacts from this project. First of all, my property sits about 10 feet lower in grade to the proposed site, which raises serious drainage concerns. Without proper drainage controls, runoff could flow directly into my yard, threatening my home. My next real impact, and it's a major concern of mine, is privacy. The proposed multifamily building would sit extremely close to the property line. Headlights, noise, activity at all hours of the day and night will entreat on my family's quiet and peaceful enjoyment of our home. We're talking about a 28-foot building on a 10-foot grade, close to my property line, that will cause shadowing, overlooking issues, reducing both our privacy and our property value. Property value is a real issue for abutters. I've invested in my home expecting residential compatibility, not a high-density multifamily living condition immediately next door. With strong provisions, my, I'm sorry, without strong provisions, my property faces irreparable damages to its market value through loss of privacy, noise, light pollution, and potential drainage issues. Now Matt has already discussed some concessions with us, including fencing and natural screening, and we do appreciate that. But we understand verbal promises are not enforceable. That's why I respectfully request the planning board to adopt the following as binding conditions of approval. One, we would like to change the layout of the medical building in the apartment building. That way, we were talking about a one-story building with the medical building as opposed to a two-story with all the shadowing challenges, and we're also afforded to have off-hour privacy, which includes weekends and nights. Two, the robust screening of 15-foot arborvitae's, which he mentioned in our meeting at the hotel, continuing the full length of the fence. A vinyl fence stretching from 17 Tilton Street to 23 Tilton Street, following that existing fence line that currently sits. Screening and fencing maintained in perpetuity by the owners of 63 and 65 Aubrey Street. Adequate drainage protections during and after construction. As Lee said, dark sky compliant lighting, shielded and directed away from abutters. No HVAC condensers, snow removal equipment, or dumpsters along the Tilton Street lot lines. And we would like to retain the existing trees on the 23 Tilton Street side of the fence. Now, I feel that these are reasonable, common sense conditions that balance the development with the, that balance development with the protection of abutters homes' privacy and property values. I respectfully ask the board to include them as binding conditions of approval. At the end of the day, I feel that all parties involved can come to a common ground resolution where Matt gets his buildings, and we, the abutters, retain a sense of the neighborhood feel that we enjoy and that I actually grew up in. My kids are fourth-generation residents of that neighborhood. And I know it was mentioned earlier about the OSOD, the zoning. I'd like to also address that zoning, the protection.
I'm sorry, you're already at four and a half minutes.
Understood. Understood. I just want to thank everybody's time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room wishing to be heard?
How you doing? When we had the meeting with Matt, he discussed that he might be, he will be offering to the board to switch the buildings around. So put the apartment building, the two-story, out by Aubrey Street.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, can you say who you are and where you live, please?
Darren de Salvatore, 12 Tilton Street. All right, so back to, we were discussing at the meeting at the end, that switching the buildings around, putting the big, higher building, the apartment complex closer to the street, where all the noise is going to be from the vehicles, and put the medical building, where it's going to be closed down at 6:00 at night, 7:00 at night, and there'll be no traffic back there for our quiet neighborhood. Just hopefully that you can see that. He said he'd have no problem switching around, but it's up to the board. I'm just relaying the messages. Hopefully, we can do that, and everybody will be happy. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room wishing to be heard? Seeing no one, anyone on Zoom?
If you'd like to be heard on Zoom, raise your virtual hand. I'm not seeing anyone looking to be recognized.
Okay. I will bring it back to the board then for questions for Mr. Sheridan. Why don't we start? Mr. Donaldson?
So one question I have is regards to the drainage. Do you have a drainage plan already? And we already know by zoning, whatever drainage is on the property that's being developed has got to stay on the property. So do you have any information you can give to that as far as relief? I believe that's an issue for the residents.
Yeah, so Engineering's already reviewed our drainage plan. We addressed their comments. All of the runoff has to be maintained on our site. We need to install and maintain erosion control during the entire project, and that'll be part of, before we can even start working, the town comes out and actually inspects all the erosion control to make sure it's in place before work actually begins. So in terms of drainage, runoff, erosion control, we've checked off all those boxes.
And I don't know if I missed it on the first slide, or I didn't get to write it down. These 11 units, how many bedrooms?
One bedroom. Uh, one bedroom.
One bedrooms? And you already addressed the screening issue. And you're not opposed to switching the units to be in the front or the back? Is, is that?
Uh, no. So there must be a little confusion in that. There's no way right now I can commit to actually switching the uses because I have no idea if the medical building will actually fit in the rear of the site, if it'll work or not. So there's no way right now I'm committing to switching the uses.
There is no comment from the public.
Okay. I don't have any more, any further questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did take a walk on the site and believed it to be clearly, it's an abandoned site right now? There's no one there, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Not sure for how long. It looks in fairly bad condition, and the, for me, the retention of the trees and the general design seemed quite an improvement. But that, of course, is from the perspective of Aubrey Street, and these are people to the rear. I did as well find, was confused about the statements made. I thought you were saying 30 feet was the setback you had agree, agreed to, as opposed to the 10-foot requirement, and that was your compromise at moving the building back to have less effect on the people. And I didn't see in the plan or note whether or not there were, I, I see in this letter that we received, 15-foot arborvitae along that fence or whatever. I would, I would ask for native trees myself, but are there trees in your plan that would be along that fence?
Uh, yes, sir. And Mr. Mann, just so you know, I am committed to putting the building at 30 feet.
Right, right. Yeah. I understood that. I just was confused at the statements that were made after, where they assumed otherwise. I mean, I understand the neighbors wanting to mitigate this as much as possible, and it is a little challenging to understand what those mitigation, I mean, how difficult it would be to live in that regard, but I certainly understand, living downtown, how things intrude upon your privacy fairly easily. Mr. Hartman, the, this was, the OSOD is being, this area has that overlay. What was the intent of that overlay? Can you summarize that?
Sure. As I mentioned earlier, at one point, so the person who actually owned, I think it was the abutting property, went to town meeting and convinced town meeting to rezone his property. He, I think he famously said, "I just want to sell hot dogs," and rezoned the property to commercial that would allow something much like what you see. It was the same zoning that you see where Mayflower, the gas station is, and the Mayflower convenience stores. So he did that, and then very quickly after that, several of the neighbors nearby said, "If he has it, I want it." And we saw this potential for the neighborhood, that whole area to change drastically, more for that type of retail use. So we spent a good, over a year, probably two years, and we had an Aubrey Street committee made up of neighbors, and we discussed options. And that's when everybody said, "Look, we can live with professional offices that are nine to five. What we don't want is to have a 24/7, 7-Eleven that's open in, in our, on our street." So we went to town meeting and said we want to downzone this area that was already zoned for commercial, downzone it so that that retail's no longer allowed, but allow for a more intensive use if somebody wants, which is the medical office, professional offices, but also still allows residents to stay there, too. So it was a compromise to say the neighborhood's changing, but we want to minimize those impacts as much as possible so that people have the rights. And that overlay district starts at the high school and ends at South Street. So it does not include the piece of Aubrey Street south of the high school.
So this seems to fit into that.
It does.
Intent. Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Smith?
Um, yes. Did you say? I don't. Did you say you were going to comply with the, the dark sky lighting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, there's also mention here of the noise and placement of HVAC condensers. Are you going to be addressing that?
Uh, so through construction, all of the HVAC condensers would actually be placed on, it would be the Mary Lou's side of the building, so they wouldn't actually be on the gable wall, they'd be on the rear of the building, and they'd actually be along the Mary Lou's side of the property line.
Okay, thank you. And then, the trees, I do commend you on that. That's a beautiful group of trees that you're keeping by the entrance, and then also the trees toward the back of the property also are, are really nice trees. So thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Grandy?
Thank you, through the chair. I'm looking at the striping of the lot in the landscape plan. Can we stripe further as far as walkability from the apartment building to the medical building? It's just a matter of striping that area so you can walk across the five-foot sidewalk, and it could be hashed out for a walking area to connect so people can walk if they're going to the medical building from the apartment. Who knows? They might even be working in the medical building and living in this building.
Yeah, that's no problem at all. Makes total sense, looking at the site plan.
Yeah. I'm trying to find the, it's a dumpster enclosure, I might have missed it on these plans, there's so many of them. Is it a fenced enclosure, masonry enclosure? With a gate in the front?
Yep, fenced enclosure with a gate, so you won't actually see the dumpster.
All right. So we can augment around that dumpster a little better with some landscaping, so you're not looking at the dumpster, basically, on the, the three sides, the back, the two sides.
Yeah.
Not the front, obviously.
Yeah, along the fence, we could certainly add some landscaping.
And what type of fence did you say we were putting in along the property line?
Vinyl.
Vinyl. Okay. And are you going to do the 15-foot arborvitae that were asked for?
Yeah, so arborvitae, you can typically buy them in like two-to-three foot increments, so I'd be seeking to get 12-to-15-foot arborvitae.
Right. To try to augment the landscaping here as much as possible. The entrance and exit out of Aubrey Street, is there signage there at all? Nothing, right? Just stop, stop line and the striping with stop sign?
Yeah, so it, there'd just be a standard stop bar on coming out onto Aubrey Street out of the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Donaldson, you had another question?
Yes. Who's, um, will you be managing these property, the, both properties, or they're, can be built and sold?
No, I'll, I'll own and maintain both properties.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure we know who to go to if we have problems.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. First question for staff. I understand that there has been, from the packet we have, that there's already been approval for two buildings on this site, two office buildings, which was a greater square footage and not as much setback. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I certainly understand the neighbors' concerns regarding the difference between residential and commercial in the back area. At the same time, I also know the police concerns, which is they don't like to have residences up at the front and then empty buildings in the back in the evening where people end up going behind residential areas and parking. So with respect to the protection of that area, obviously, you've done a, you've done what you can to move the building back. How far from the rear sight line, so from the first window, to the back of the neighbor's property line is it? So I know it's, obviously, it's 30 feet from the edge of the building, but the windows are further forward. So do you know how far that is?
Uh, it would be, just looking at our, our renderings, it'd probably be 35 feet.
Okay. And do you know how far that is to the back of the structure for the neighbors? To their houses themselves?
I couldn't speak to how far their homes are from the lot line.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I could say, though, is I understand with the grade, the concern, and in this instance, the grade actually helps because when we plant the arborvitae, they're immediately actually going to be taller than what they're going to be looking at, just because of the grade difference.
So the grade drop is off property line, off your property line? Is that correct?
Yes.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from members of the board? Okay. Seeing nothing. We are advisory, so do I have a motion to recommend subject to and whatever conditions we've discussed?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Mann to recommend approval pursuant to the condotion, conditions we've talked about. Again, just some of the document, just, Mr. Hartman, why don't you just outline those again so we have those for the record?
Increase the setback of the multifamily building to 30 feet. Arborvitae to be planted along the rear property line, 12 to 15 feet in height, and a what-high vinyl wa, fence?
Six feet.
Six-foot-high vinyl fence along the rear property. All HVAC shall be placed along the lot line abutting Lot 443, which is Mary Lou's. Stripe, stripe the walkway between the multifamily or delineate the walkway between the multifamily structure and the medical office building, and adding landscape adjacent to the dumpster location.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Mann. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Donaldson. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you to the residents for coming out. Thank you. Good luck at the ZBA. Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA 4183, 39 Hedge Road, Pulte Group. And I don't know if this is done in conjunction with the next ZBA 4184. Also, that's 24 Sandry Drive, Pulte Group, and I know that's all part of one proposed complex, so we'll...
Yeah, so if I could, it's just an odd thing that the state has done, that the state, because they're not contiguous, asked these to be listed as two separate projects. So there really are more or less one project. It's really just the state requirement for the 40B, where they said, "We'd like you to have these broken into two separate pieces for their purposes, not necessarily ours."
Okay. And again, the planning board is advisory to the ZBA on this, so we will be issuing
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I appreciate you setting aside time to see our presentation tonight. My name is Essex Petrie with Pulte Homes of New England. Joining me here tonight is Pete Ellison from TEC Engineering and Stephanie Kiefer from Smolak &amp; Vaughn. So just really quickly on, on who Pulte Homes is. Pulte Homes of New England is a wholly-owned entity of Pulte Group, which is a publicly-owned national home builder with 26 divisions throughout the United States. Pulte Homes of New England, we are completely self-funded. It's important because we aren't reliant on third-party financing or banks or lenders. We have been building in the New England region since 1994 and have been consistently putting up homes for the past 30 years. This is just a, an example of home, or excuse me, communities that we've either recently completed or are just getting under construction in kind of central Mass, eastern Mass area. I bring these up and put them on the screen for two reasons, really. If you're familiar with any of these areas, I invite you to visit the sites and get a sense of what a Pulte community looks like, either just completed or under construction or just getting underway. But also because we realize Massachusetts is a small place. You may have coworkers, friends, family members, or municipal peers that work in these communities, and we urge you to reach out and ask what the experience is working with Pulte. We strive to really find a happy agreement with the municipalities, with our community, as well as neighbors and our future homeowners. So just quickly, want to introduce the project team that we will have working on this project with us. TEC is providing our site design and civil engineering. I mentioned Pete Ellison is here tonight, and he will be presenting some of the project details. MDM Transportation is doing the transportation impact analysis for the project. We recently did submit our TIA with the ZBA package. Bob Micho from MDM will be attending future ZBA meetings and will be available for a deep dive into the traffic information and analysis, as we know that traffic is a focal point for this project. LEC is handling our natural resource evaluation, identification, and analysis. We have had coordination with the Conservation Office, and we anticipate submitting our NOI in the next few weeks. Weston Sampson, who's familiar with the town of Plymouth, wastewater and water engineering, is working on our design and analysis for wastewater and water, and will be on our team throughout the design process. And as I mentioned, Stephanie Kiefer is here from Smolak &amp; Vaughn, providing our legal It's hard to believe, but we've actually been working on this project with the town of Plymouth for almost two years now. I look back at my notes, and it was December of 2023 that we, we first met with Derek and Lee to talk about the opportunities at, at this site. And since that time, we have had numerous coordination and stakeholder meetings with various departments within the town of Plymouth. I don't need to read off this list, but we've hit pretty much all or most of the appropriate offices and staff to coordinate with. During that time, we received great feedback. That feedback was used to really help shape the project that was submitted to the ZBA. Just the point being that this plan that we're presenting was a result of significant coordination and with feedback from important stakeholders. We anticipate that we will get additional feedback from the meeting tonight, as well as from our public meeting process with the ZBA, and we look forward to incorporating that as the plans move forward. In addition to coordinating with municipal staff, as Lee mentioned, maybe for those that didn't hear, we also had a lengthy review process with the state, as this is a 40B project. We were required to get a project eligibility letter with Mass Housing. Through our coordination with Mass Housing, they asked that we geographically split what was originally one project called Ocean View North into two separate projects because the parcels were not contiguous. So therefore, we were required to get two separate project eligibility letters and, which then resulted in two separate application processes with the town of Plymouth. The result being Ocean View North, which is located between, on Court Street, between Hedge Road and Prince Street, and Sandry Drive, which is located off of Hedge Road. So now we'll dive into some of the more details of each of these separate projects. So Ocean View North, it's approximately six-and-a-half acre parcel. It consists of two four-story, 50-unit garden-style buildings. Each of the buildings has 50 units, so 100 total units, 25 of which will be affordable. It'll be a mix of 12 in one building and 13 in the other. The unit mix will be a mix of five three-bedroom, 22 two-bedroom, and 23 one-bedroom units in each of those buildings. Both buildings also provide garage underparking, as well as surface lot parking. These are all electric buildings, and importantly, I want to note, these are
these are all homeownership units, there are no rentals associated with the project. In the surface lot, we will also be providing EV spaces, serviced by dual-headed charging outlets. Additionally, we will be providing buffers to the adjacent residential areas, both natural and through privacy fencing. We did submit a more detailed landscaping plan as part of our ZBA package. I do want to note, we don't want to over-prescribe the treatment quite yet, as we anticipate coordination with the neighbors and the abutters on what those appropriate treatments may look like from their perspective. If you're familiar with the site, there is significant variation in topography. So each home and each homeowner, each location may be treated differently. For instance, the homes that are located along Court Street, and at the beginning of Prince Street, we will look to provide screening through fencing at the top of the, at the property line, and additional vegetation. But we also want to do a deeper dive in what's out there today along that property line, and go out and flag some trees. It's hard to tell from aerial photo, you know, what is salvageable and what isn't, so we want to identify if there are existing trees, providing some of that buffer that we would like to maintain, and that, as a result, could adjust the design in that exact location. Similarly, as you get down towards the end of Prince Street, the neighbors on Cordage Street and on Prince Street have, will have, and we've heard, they do have different concerns. The Cordage Street residents will have similar privacy and screening and buffering concerns that we'll work with them on, and the neighbors directly adjacent on Prince Street have expressed some concerns regarding headlights coming out of the driveway. And we have been working with them, speaking with them, and will look to identify opportunities to eliminate and mitigate that concern. As far as the remainder of the landscaping discussion, we have been coordinating with the Conservation Office. We've been working with them through their requests, and somewhat of a requirement on certain types of plantings, and native plantings, and drought-resistant grasses, and certain seed mixes. So everything that we will be proposing, we've coordinated with them, but will also be finalized through our notice of intent and Conservation Review Process upcoming in the next couple of months. And now I'm just going to ask Pete to go through some more of the engineering details on the site.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Peter Ellison with TEC, and I'm the civil engineer for the project. Thank you for hearing us tonight. So Ocean View North, Building One, like Essex said, is fifty total units. Twelve of those are affordable, with garage under-parking. It's a four-story building of residential use with the garage underneath. And the access to the site is off of Court Street. If you're familiar with the area, the new driveway location that will access Court Street is right about across the street from the driveway into the CVS there, on the corner. That driveway connection is a two-way vehicular access, and also provides a sidewalk connection to Court Street for pedestrians. As you come into the site, there are forty-one surface parking spaces that are situated on the south and west side of the building. As you navigate through the parking lot towards the back of the site, the grade naturally slopes down, so that you can access the garage parking underneath the building. You'll see that all three of the, all three of the buildings are provided with full access around the buildings for fire, emergency services, or any of the residents as a secondary way to get out of the parking lot. The garage itself provides fifty parking spaces, so in this case, ninety-one total parking spaces for Building One. The building is to be served by public utilities, water, sewer, and electric. That will be accessed off of Court Street. And a pretty significant stormwater system is being proposed to mitigate the increase in impervious area at the site. The existing condition is fully wooded, so any impervious proposed is going to be an increase. So what we're proposing here is a combination of traditional closed drainage, so catch basins, manholes, and then toward the back of the site, an infiltration basin with a sediment forbey that will treat and infiltrate the stormwater. Any excess stormwater from that basin will spill over into the, into the existing wetland where the stormwater flows today. Building Two is down at the end of, is accessed down at the end of Prince Street, where it becomes a dead end. Same exact footprint as Building One, fifty units, thirteen affordable in this building. And again, the garage parking is underneath. Similarly to Building One, there's a two-way access driveway with a sidewalk connection out to Prince Street proposed. There are forty-three surface spaces proposed. Most of those are proposed on the west face of Building Two. And similarly, the parking lot grades down toward the back of the site, where you can access the garage under-parking, with fifty total spaces in the garage. So ninety-three total parking spaces for this site. As you can see, there's a full vehicular access around the building, similar to Building One, for fire and emergency services. Toward the back of the building, there's, we're also proposing a sidewalk connection down to the Plymouth Rail Trail that would provide a nice amenity to the residents of the building to be able to get downtown. This building is proposed to be served by public utilities. Water is proposed to connect out to Prince Street, as well as the electric. And the sewer for the building is proposed to tie into the existing town sewer main that's beneath the rail trail, in this case. As far as stormwater improvements for Building Two, we're proposing catch basins, manholes, three detention systems that will capture and detain stormwater to slow it down, and then one infiltration basin toward the bottom of the site that will treat and infiltrate the stormwater before it runs off.
Thanks, Pete. So this is a rendering of the architecture that we have prepared for Ocean View North. We have had success with similar styles in the region, but we do continuously update our buildings and modernize. Particularly, we have updated the exterior, and somewhat with the interior with this building. You may have seen some of the renderings that we presented a year or so ago, and it looks a little bit different from this. We took some feedback that we received. We took the balconies and expanded, put them outside. We expanded the box space that just gives a little more depth to the facade. And it works both from an exterior perspective, and as well as it makes for an improved unit on the interior as well. There is elevator access on each of the floors and the garage. It makes for one floor living for each of these units. As you can see here, again, just those, the side view really further highlighting the projecting balconies and expanded box space there. I will note that we anticipate spending some time discussing architecture with ZBA, and there are opportunities from a color and facade material perspective to expand the options and discussion points. So now I'll shift to the Sandry Drive site. For those that are familiar with Sandry Drive, is located at the end of Hedge Road, across from the Plymouth Bike Path parking lot. We're really excited to work on this site in particular with the town, because we really just look forward to transforming this location. Currently, it's home to a vacant industrial building. That's really a hazard to the neighborhood. As you can see in the top-right picture there, the Seaside Trail, or known as the North Plymouth Rail Trail, is a really fantastic amenity that passes directly adjacent to the building, and travels along Sandry Drive. And really, the current situation just creates an uncomfortable atmosphere for the many users who bike and, and walk through this path. So what we are proposing at Sandry Drive, the total area is approximately two-and-a-half acres. We are proposing a five-story building with podium garage parking, similar to the Harbor Walk apartments in Cordage, except our garage would be a fully enclosed garage, not on a peer system. Again, there's direct access to Sandry Drive off of Hedge Road. This will also be an all-electric building. There's a total of sixty-three units in this building. Sixteen of those will be affordable units. And it will be a mix of seven three-bedroom, twenty-six two-bedroom, and thirty-one bedroom units. Again, all homeownership units, with a total of one-hundred-and-nine parking spaces, including the fifty in the garage servicing the project. And again, we'll provide EV spaces in the surface, excuse me, in the surface lot, serviced by dual-headed charging outlets. We are coordinating with the town of Plymouth, various departments, on the preservation and enhancement of the Seaside Trail. You can see it's accessed, right there, currently it is striped along Sandry Drive, and we are working with the town to make sure that that is, again, preserved and enhanced, and certainly maintained as part of our project. Pete, do you want to...
So the access into the Sandry Drive site will be proposed as a two-way vehicular access drive, plus a new sidewalk to kind of improve that Seaside Trail that Essex mentioned. As you pull into the site, forty-one surface parking spaces would be located on the left. And then if you pull around toward the back of the site, an additional nineteen surface spaces. So fifty-nine total. The garage will be accessed from the rear of the building, and again, fifty parking spaces in the garage, for a total of one-hundred-and-nine parking spaces. The building itself is sixty-three units, it's five stories of residential above a podium level of garage parking. Similar to the other two buildings, the public utilities that will serve the building are actually available on the site, in this case, because of its previously developed nature. So water and sewer is available at the site, as well as electric. And from a stormwater perspective, this, this portion of the project provides a significant improvement. We'll be reducing impervious area by around seven thousand square feet, so quite a bit of added green space. The site currently does not have any type of stormwater treatment. And what we're proposing is two new rain gardens that will treat that stormwater prior to discharge to the wetlands.
Thanks, Pete. So as mentioned earlier, the significant coordination that we've had with various town departments, and in addition to making adjustments and enhancement to the individual building site plan, we have identified an off-site item that was really important for a number of departments. This is at the Hedge Road, Court Street intersection. If you're familiar with this intersection, it's particularly gnarly, and particularly for emergency vehicle access coming from the Hedge Road Fire Station, just off, just at the top of the page there. So based on numerous meetings with the Fire Department, with the DPW, as well as with the town of Plymouth's Traffic Engineer, GPI, MDM has designed a series of improvements to alert traffic of approaching emergency vehicle from the station to clear the area. Essentially, so there's an emergency beacon signal that will cross over Court Street with lights on top of it. Essentially, what it is, is there'll be a button inside the station, so when the fire personnel get on the truck, they hit the button, it remotely triggers that light, lights go off. There is also going to be striping painted in the intersection, similar to a "Don't block the box" type approach. And there also will be driver warning signs along Court Street on either side of the Hedge Road intersection. The architecture for Sandry Drive is very similar to Ocean View North. Again, as noted before, we are still working on and considering coloring and material options for the facade. Materials, it's going to be a mix of stone veneer or fiber cement panels. We are also looking at larger hardy panels, which are, have more optionality as far as what they can look like, and what you can do with them from a color and material perspective. So just where we are in the process with ZBA, we submitted our applications in August. We have received comments back from some town departments, including Fire Department and Engineering. And we also did receive peer review comments back from Apex Engineering that we are in the process of reviewing. We anticipate we'll get feedback tonight, as well as through the ZBA process, that will inform additional comments, and we will look to address those all collectively. And just to touch upon quickly, opportunities for public engagement. We met with the North Plymouth Steering Committee last week. It was a good meeting, and we had good, positive conversations. Obviously, we're here tonight with the planning board. Our first meeting with ZBA is next Monday. We anticipate that we will likely need at least three meetings with the ZBA. All opportunities for public comment and outreach. And additionally, there will be a public comment process associated with our Conservation Commission process, which we look to be getting started, and likely, we're submitting in likely three weeks to a month, and see when we get on their next agenda. With that, that's the end of our presentation. Sure, I don't know, how do I go back? There we go. Which one do you want to see? Okay, yep, yep.
Thank you all, refer at first to staff.
So as, I think, obvious, this is called Chapter Forty-B, Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty-B Comprehensive Permit, also known as the anti-snob zoning law that the state has enacted. What that law says, that if the town does not have ten percent of its housing as deed-restricted affordable, as categorized by the state, then that you are now open and susceptible to forty-B's projects being submitted. So Plymouth right now is in about the seven-and-a-half percent, eight percent range for a subsidized housing inventory, so we're under that. I will point out that with the project that was approved in Colony Place, the three-hundred-unit forty-B there, we are now in a two-year safe harbor. This project was filed just prior to the ZBA granting that project, so this one has come in prior to that safe harbor being granted. However, moving forward, should somebody want to do a forty-B in Plymouth, we do have the ability to say no for two years because of that safe harbor. But again, this project is not subject to that. What we are recommending that the board do is really focus on mitigation. So in your packet, you have the items that were discussed. So the select board, its town staff, worked quite a bit with Pulte to try to figure out if there is a way to do what's called a friendly forty-B. And that means that the select board would support it and be a partner in the project. It gives a little more insulation if there's any legal actions or things taken. So we went and spent a fair amount of time working on an MOU to see if the town was willing to support this project. In the end, that was not supported. But you do have the MOU outline, the major conditions in your report. And again, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but I think what I see, what I've heard today is that Item A for the emergency vehicle access, that they're looking to move forward with that. I'm very encouraged to see the commitment they have to formalizing the connection to the rail trail. There were three other things, and again, these are the things that I think the board should be discussing, and I know the ZBA will be too, which was upgrade to the Prince Street water main. So on Prince Street, they have asbestos-lined water mains, and the town was hoping to be able to get that improved as part of this project. Looping the water main between Prince Street and Hedge Road, that gives redundancy, and makes for a more robust water system. And then providing some kind of turnaround at the end of Prince Street, just so that if somebody's going down there, they have the ability to turn around, because it is a dead-end street. So those were the things that, again, I think we'd encourage the board to talk about, and hopefully encourage the applicant to consider doing them, in spite of the fact that it was not ultimately supported as a friendly forty-B. The second thing I would recommend that the board focuses in on is that... is that, as pointed out, there's quite a bit of topography here. This is wooded property. When you go to do a development at this density, virtually every tree has to be removed. So to really focus on, especially the Prince Street neighborhood, what can be done to provide additional screening, landscaping, fencing, things for headlight glare, as much as for providing additional buffering between these developments and the existing neighborhood. And again, I think that's what I would recommend we focus on. I would also point out, as you look at the schedule here, and we've had initial discussions, that what I would envision is an opening dialogue tonight. They go to the ZBA, but again, there's no requirement that it's a one-stop to this board. So that you open your discussion, express the things that you would like them to consider, and then as they start to progress through the process, we'll help them come back to the board and give an update on the things you've asked for, or maybe the things that the zoning board has asked for. And so that would be my recommendation for how we proceed. Again, starting tonight with just some initial requests and things to consider, and then have them come back as they go through this process and report back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Okay, at this point, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak?
Yes, I'm the only one here. Hi, Carol Jankowski, and I live at seven Prince Street. So I live directly across from the house that will border that, I don't know what building I'm referring to.
Building one.
Building one. I feel rather defeated, as many do, who are struggling with Forty-B. I am not a housing snob. In fact, I support all kinds of efforts to build properties for people to live in. But it's interesting because there's not much support or protection for those of us who are already housed in the neighborhoods where these developments are being built. And again, all due respect to Polte, because I know that they have done a lot of work in trying to work with the town and all the departments and to add things in to make these a little bit more amenable, these projects. However, I know I'm probably going to go over time too, so I'm asking for your grace here. I do, I feel really concerned about the building across from me because of all the noise and the light and the destruction to the natural habitat. You know, there's two habitats we're talking about, the wildlife and the wildlife humans who live right across the street from all that. I'm really hoping that they will do and that you'll take very seriously the concerns about mitigating the noise and the light and to maintaining as much of the trees and the vegetation on that property as possible. That is an area where migrating birds fly into. It's adjacent to the Pine Barrens. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the entry in, you know, the egress for that particular property on Court Street. One of the fellows here mentioned it's directly across from the CVS driveway. Now, I'm saying this with much experience. I'm an avid walker. I walk up and down every road in North Plymouth, all the time. Leaving CVS in that driveway, it's a left turn only. Why? Because if you took a right turn, you're in a, what my children might call a cluster, fill in the blank. It's absolutely insane at that intersection. It's not designed properly because Prince Street doesn't line up with Cherry Street. There's a little jog there, okay? Nobody gets it right, and nobody pays attention. And now you're going to be adding how many units? Dumping out to Court Street, in, just feet from here to that window, to the lights. I just cannot see how that can be safe or how you can address safety there, but I would ask you to really look carefully at that. And also, just a reminder, and again, I'm on this property now, oh, actually, this addresses both. We are in a pedestrian-filled village. We have a lot of apartment dwellers. We are apartment dwellers. We are five churches, maybe six, if you extend the boundary a little bit, in North Plymouth. Lots of people walking. Hedge School, the only school in Massachusetts that has no buses. So what happens twice a day? Grandmothers and children, little crowds of children on bikes, scooters, and electric scooters are walking to and from. Thank God we have a crossing guard there. But as you can see, I'm trying just to describe the challenge. Again, I'm all for housing. I want people to have places to live. But we can't add chaos onto an already rather chaotic area unless every little, every little thing is taken care of. All of these items are thought about. I know you care, but you've got to have something to address that. Now, the building at the end of Prince Street, another woodland area, even closer to the Pine Barrens. So again, and when you go down Prince Street, I invite you down, stop by, there are kids, families of children, first-generation immigrants, playing on their bicycles and scooters in the road, all the time. You're adding how many families at the end of that road? And how many vehicles? We're adding, this is going to be a rather dangerous situation. And I just want to make you aware of that. I know you don't have a lot of power to maybe do a whole heck of a lot, but I'm hoping that these fine gentlemen and the organization that they represent will continue to partner with us to look at this. Thank you, and thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Yes.
Hey, I'm very sick, so I'm going to try to stay away from everybody. I just want to say, I really do appreciate that. Oh, I'm sorry, Liz Tracy, Born Street, fifteen Born Street in Plymouth. I wanted to say that I do like that they added the bike path from Prince Street over down into the, right down in there. I'm sorry, I'm really not. I appreciate that they added the balconies. I like that they added the native grasses. It's a dense forest. I wrote, okay. So that area is really, really very busy. It's very, I can't imagine all this building there. I really can't, and I know there's nothing we can do about it. I really, really do. But Hedge Road, that needs a sidewalk. There's no way around it. There's a bike path, there's a fire station. There's going to be about a hundred and sixty-three units down there. So to not have a sidewalk and expect a bike path to be there, I walk my dogs down there, and it just seems like it's, a sidewalk would be very, very useful. If not, I can guarantee it's not going to be a safe place to be. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we do. So I see Mr. Cook's hand up, so we will ask him to unmute.
Hello, thank you.
Good evening.
I really appreciate you providing a Zoom option tonight. My wife and I, we live at thirty-five Prince Street, and that's the last home at the end of Prince Street on the right. And we have been in touch, in close contact, with Essex and his team. We drafted and filed a letter with the ZBA, which should be in your packet. And within that letter, there's a QR code that you could scan. We created a, we use the latest plans in the elevation to create a 3D rendering because we have some pretty serious concerns about light pollution. Not in the form of like, street lamps or anything like that, but just in terms of vehicle light, and specifically as vehicles exit the planned driveway. We kind of had a theory that they might sweep the front of our house, including the second story. So we put that, we commissioned a rendering, and that provides you a pretty accurate representation of exactly how that light will hit our home. We've had some pretty deep thought on this, about how to mitigate it. We've thought about a hedge ourselves, but ultimately, and we discussed that with Essex as well, but ultimately just decided that's not really a feasible solution to the issue just because we have so little frontage of about twenty feet. So in a couple emails that we've exchanged with Essex, Essex, excuse me, he's committed to looking at moving that hairpin turn and mitigating that. So that's kind of what we would be looking for from this board, is issuing that comprehensive permit contingent on following through on that promise to move that hairpin turn and eliminate that light pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Rogers?
Good evening. I'm a direct abutter of the End of Prince Street project. And I have a lot of concerns about, especially after seeing the layout of where my home is and where this building, the corner of the building, is going to be constructed. It looks to me as if it's going to be maybe fifteen or twenty, thirty feet from my house, which is very, very close. My additional concern is, as the parking lot appears, whichever direction it comes from, whether it's going down to the end of the street where the stop sign is now, and going down that way, it still has to flip around. Headlights are going to hit my house day and night, causing lights on the bedroom and invasion of privacy, and I have a lot of concerns about that. I would like to see the entrance for that building section to be actually out to Hedge Road and just have Prince Street be used as an emergency exit for police and fire only. That would mitigate so much issues with headlights and lighting. And the other concern I have, after seeing tonight's depictions, was the parking lot is, the open parking lot is going to be right in my backyard, and it's going to cause a lot of light at night in an area which I'm used to seeing, total darkness. I'd like to reconsider this enormous project and perhaps even cut out that building and just go with the Sandy Drive and the building off of Court Street. But that's a direct abutter, making that my request, because I think it's going to decrease my property value and cause so much more traffic on a street that is a very residential area. The last point I have is, you're taking a totally residential, two-story, one-story family neighborhood and turning it into a commercial property. And I don't, I think there are better locations in the town of Plymouth where this project would be better suited. And I'd like everybody to consider using some of the open space that we do have rather than creating another monster like over where the old Walmart used to be. The character of this design is just too commercial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to be heard?
If you're looking to speak on Zoom, raise your virtual hand. I'm not seeing anyone else.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board for questions for the applicant. Mr. Mann, why don't you start us off?
Thank you. Good evening. Let's see, overall, I see the potential to, as the applicant states in your materials, improve upon existing conditions, reduce the amount of impact to natural resources, and treat these buildings as a contributing element toward the beautification of the area. I think those are laudable goals, and I think, to some degree, necessary in this area. But I believe it will only happen if these buildings are integrated with the community, and we're hearing some of the concerns that kind of address the integration I'm talking about. Also, I believe that was the intent of the MOU that was worked out, or not worked out, between the town and Polte last year. So one of the things I was hoping to hear, and I think I have now, but I'll review it quickly, was where the proposed MOU still stands in terms of those items. I know we have the emergency vehicle access you addressed, and the north, I believe, the North Plymouth Rail Trail improvements, that's another one. But then there's the water, the water main, Prince Street water main, the looped water main, and the turnaround, all of which are traffic mitigation. Traffic clearly here, if you're familiar with this area, is a major safety issue. That intersection of Prince and Cherry and Court Street is a regular disaster. It happens on a regular basis. There have been some horrible things that have happened there. And I think, in part, I can't state equivocally, but unequivocally, but because of how poorly designed that is, how we have, you know, the northbound section not aligning with the leftbound section in Prince as well, it's just a really bad intersection that I think, if this goes forward, has to be improved, has to be brought to a point that it's truly safe and fitting to the North Plymouth community that is just south of there, where they've really been working hard to kind of make it a more, well, to naturalize it in some ways and make it a nice little neighborhood. So I want to get into the details of some of the permits and things that the applicant expects to be waived and asked that they're addressed as well. One of the things is, it is difficult to ascertain, especially from a Planning Board member's perspective, what this, what these lots, most of them, look like. And it's hard to access that. I have, I've, you know, gone with the permission of one neighbor and into the woods there, and I do see a lot of very large trees that have been, for twenty-five years or so, a good part of the quality of life, a buffer in its own way, as somebody was speaking to a habitat. I will address the question of Pine Barrens. You were mentioning, that's not near the Pine Barrens. This whole community is part of this globally rare eco-region, the Massachusetts coastal Pine Barrens. It's a bit of a pet peeve and an avocation of mine. So this is a globally rare area, and there is species in there that are wonderful, species of goldenrod and other things. And as somebody was saying, a lot of birds in there. So I know that these, these buildings are sited in a particular way that will take a lot of that out, but somehow they have, that has to be addressed, both for mitigating for the citizens that live in there and have lived there twenty-five, thirty years or so, but also just in general, that is something. And your company seems to speak to those issues, and I was heartened to hear your comments about addressing it when the Conservation Commission begins to address it. Although I think that's out of sync. I think it needs to be addressed ahead of time because it'll be difficult to address those things after the fact. So I, I think that you could begin to address those right away. So some of the other concerns I have about some of the details that get waived under a Forty-B, and I certainly understand that, but there's still concerns, in this community especially, with earth removal. I didn't hear any comments, and I'm sure maybe it's represented. I didn't hear any comments, and I'm sure maybe it's represented in the voluminous details that are in your plans, what's going to happen as you move dirt around there, is it staying on site, what's happening with it, how it's being used. There's also a waiver for signage, and I would assume, but not readily have faith in that the signage will be somehow in keeping with the community and not somehow garish or overbearing to the area. One of the issues is visibility, too. It's not really a, I don't think that's a waiver of any kind, but how these things are seen and from the community is very important. I kind of, I guess what, though they're nicely designed and, you know, for the sites, it's not, the neighbors don't want to see them. Let's see, what, also flood protection. I know that's being addressed, but it's also a kind of conservation issue, but it's a critical one. We're in a very dry period of time right now, and most areas that I've heard people comment on, the ponds are very low. It's even in a five, almost five to seven-year cycle. So, that area, I have seen flood all over the place with, near the rail trail and things. And I think it's a function, not only of there being a lot of wetland, but the bad way that that was developed over the years, the, you know, industrial or commercial or other buildings, you know, cutting off natural drainage and things. So, that really needs to be very carefully addressed, because we're in a dry period now. But even that building on, is it Sandry, the third building, is adjacent to two very wet areas.
Yep.
One of them, the water is visible, the other, it's way down, but I'm not sure exactly how that's going to be addressed. Let me see. So, you talk about in the plan, in ways that are reassuring, in a lot of ways, impact to natural resources, claim a reduction in the impact, I guess means negative impact, but I really would like to know specifically how, and I do see there's going to be a dramatic decrease in pervious areas, loss of dozens, if not hundreds, of trees and native species. So, I'm hoping that that becomes a very specific part of your plan going forward. And I know we're in a position here where we're asking for these things, but it looks like a company that really shows a lot of forethought and a lot, has a lot of commitment to these issues. So, I'm, I think if you're going to be at all accepted into the community, and this goes as smoothly as possible, that you need to address those things proactively. So, the residents, only three spoke, but I think you got a nutshell, and I know you've heard this before from people like that, but they, I think they really represented the concerns, and I'm heartened to hear that there are going to be some, or there may be some modifications to the way that the lights come out, to the way that they're accessed at all. I'm not sure if the Hedge Road thing is a possibility. There's wetlands and other things in there that may make that unfeasible, but it is a big issue, how these people are coming, that Hedge Road intersection, is it an intersection? It's, you know, to have 100 cars coming out of there, I don't know. You can't have lights every 50 feet, but, you know, it's a, it's an issue, definitely. Natural buffers, congestion, sidewalk, light pollution, traffic safety. I guess that's it. I'm sorry if I rambled a bit, but it's a complex project. I have never dealt with one of this complexity before as a member of the planning board, and I'm hoping that we can consider whatever I said here and others will say, and come back and be able to discuss this as well as you go through the process, because I do think, again, harkening back to your, the words that are in your proposals, that this could end up being a good improvement to the area on so many levels, but it needs to address, it needs to mitigate all the concerns of the resident, and especially safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Grandy.
Thank you, Chairman. Through the chair. In discussions in your presentation this evening and through what Mr. Hartman had to say as far as the memorandum or agreement, there are a number of issues that have been brought up and discussed by the town through this memorandum of understanding, even though the selectmen did not support the project. Have you read this memorandum? You have, correct?
The MOU that was drafted?
Yes.
Yes, we helped craft that.
Okay. So, are you in a position to proceed with these items that are on that memorandum?
Well, that memorandum was denied by the select board.
I know, but I'm asking you, through this process, through the zoning board process and negotiations with the zoning board in the town of Plymouth, through this process, even though it's not a friendly B anymore, it's a 40B, right? Not a friendly 40B, it's actually hostile 40B, as far as I'm concerned, because it's not a friendly 40B anymore. So, I would ask, are you going to move forward with the Hedge Pond, Court Street, emergency vehicle access improvement, which you said yes this evening, and the work on the North Plymouth Rail Trail connection, and also the Prince Street water main upgrade, and the Prince Street looped water main? These are all important issues as far as that area is concerned. With old eight-inch asbestos cement water main in Prince Street is a very high priority. So, I would ask and hope that you would lean forward and say, yes, we'll do these things, even though there was nothing signed by the Board of Selectmen. And you've heard from residents this evening that say they walk with children, and they're riding their bikes and the whole nine yards, so that whole area is important as far as safety is concerned. I think that's a very important issue. You heard one resident say that when they're leaving the parking area, the lights are going to go into her second-floor windows also, which is an issue as far as I am concerned. You want to work with the residents, work with the town of Plymouth to create the best project possible. You know, that stormwater, I see you report, you have a traffic study in here, you've done a lot of legwork and important work as far as something of this magnitude is concerned. And this is a huge structure. We're talking about 50 units, four, five floors, elevators, within a basically residential area, even though this particular spot in here is zoned differently. So, as far as I'm concerned, I would be disappointed if you wouldn't work with the engineering department, the town of Plymouth planning staff, the residents of this town, to create and improve things for the residents in the town. So, that is my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Donaldson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I have three areas of concern in regards to this project. One is design, and, in my opinion, and it's because it's my opinion, and I'm not an architect either, but it just looks like a Costco box put on the property. Has there any been, any consideration to make it more fitting to the neighborhood that it's, that it's going to be in? It's also, I feel, is intrusive. It's going to be six stories. It's going to be the tallest structure that's going to be overlooking everyone else in the neighborhood. That's just my opinion. I don't know as far as design, what can be done in that regard. And also, I have a very big concern in regards to Prince Street and the traffic that will be coming up and down that street, along with everyone else. And I am totally agreement with all my other board members with they've said so far in regards to the other issues, but these are my concerns. So, is there, would there be consideration to possibly have the entrance as the other, as the, the abutter suggested for Hedges Road? And if that is consideration, could there be some other consideration in regards to sidewalks on that road? And now, my next concern is in regards to the units and them being affordable aspect. So, both projects, you're only offering 80% AMI, is that correct?
Correct.
No, and how did you, how did we come to that number? Why not 70, 60, 50? Because I see in both projects, when it says 50%, there's a big fat zero. So, I'm just, I'm just curious to know, because you also understand what's affordable in Plymouth is not affordable in somewhere else, and we do have a high affordable rate here in Plymouth. So, if we're going to do affordable, let's at least make it reasonable affordable, even if you're, you know, to me, it's, you're offering the bare minimum on the AMI. So, any, anything you can enlighten me in that regard?
We are providing what is required by the Commonwealth under the 40B guidelines.
Okay. Just acquired. Yes, please.
If I could?
Yeah.
Just, probably worth it, just to mention, so this is very different than most 40, I think, or most 40Bs we've seen. So, this is owner-occupied versus rental. So, the bad news is, it's 163 units, and only the affordables will count, because it's not rental. So, it's only the affordables that count towards our inventory. The good news is, when you talk about homeownership, that rental number, unlike, I mean rental, the number for the affordable units becomes much more affordable. So, if you could kind of just explain, I know it changes, and it will change by the time you start, but what's the projected sale break point for these units? I think it's, it's important to know, because it is more affordable for homeownership under this program than it is the rental.
So, there will be a variety of price ranges for these, based on, not, not based on whether it's an AFU or an affordable unit or a market rate unit, but whether it's first floor or fourth floor. The owners will have the ability to add upgrades to units as well. But generally speaking, we're looking at, you know, 400 to $600,000 price range. That would be, no, those would be actually less than that. Those would be in the 300s for the affordables.
Okay.
What we'll do is, for homework, is to get those numbers, so, because we have three-bedroom, two-bedroom, and one-bedroom, each changes, but maybe for homework, it'd be good to, next time they come back, report just about, and the numbers change, so they're, but it'll give you an idea, if it was available today, what those units would sell for. And just also point out, oftentimes, you have the condo fees that come into play. All of that has to come into play.
Yeah, I would like to see that, please.
When they calculate what affordable is, it includes utilities, it includes association or condo fees, as well as the mortgage fees. So, again, maybe that'll be a good exercise to present at the next meeting.
Please.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Smith.
I have a question about the subdivision line, or it says future subdivision line. What's happening with the rest of the site?
We're not purchasing that, so I don't want to speak too definitively on that, but the property that is currently housing the parade material floats in the garages, we've been working with Ollie and his group to make sure that that is preserved. That was kind of important to everybody once we got, once we started with this discussion. So, the property that accesses off of Hedge Road, they just put the new fencing up and vegetation, as far as we are concerned, is going to stay as is. But we are not purchasing it, so that'll be between the owner and the current users.
Okay, so that would, it might preclude being able to connect to Hedge Road from Building Two, I guess.
Correct.
Building, you have a phasing plan, Building One, Building Two. Is Building Three the third phase?
Likely, yes. We haven't finalized that, but that's, that approach is how we're heading right now.
I think, you know, we've talked about the site work, clearly, in order to put these buildings into place, you have to clear the entire site, because you're changing the grade, you know, right up to the lot line throughout. You do have steep slopes that you're planning to seed. My experience with those slopes is that seeding sometimes works and sometimes doesn't, but what also does work is, I'd like you to consider putting in native vegetation on those slopes, because they do very well, but that takes, you know, some extra effort to get blueberries and the pine trees grow in there on that slope. But recommend you consider that, because that will help in the, you know, trying to create a buffer to not just the houses, but to other adjacent properties. A detailed question I have is, you have double parking spaces in the garages. Those, will those be side, like, like a unit, like a three-bedroom unit would have two spots, one in front of the other?
So, the garage spaces are purchased, and so if you're purchasing a tandem, you would be purchasing both of them. So, that, all of the spaces in the garage are for purchase.
And I didn't see a fire access plan. You mentioned, or engineer mentioned that that's been considered, but will there be a fire access plan that'll show the, how fire can, fire engines can access the site?
Yep. That should be in our package. The truck turn diagrams are included, showing the fire trucks access, accessing through, and that was really the key behind the design of the roadways encircling the buildings, was to allow for that full access for fire trucks to get to the entire buildings in the site and then get, leave the site.
Okay, and I share the concerns that have been raised by the other members of the board, as well as the comments from the residents about site safety, sidewalks. I know that Court Street can get very busy, even when it's not rush hour, so that entrance into Building One might be challenging to make that left turn onto Court Street to go south, if that's where they're going. I don't know if there's anything that can be done to help that, but certainly something to keep in mind. And those are my questions. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The challenge that we face as a board right now is twofold. First, we really don't have a definitive plan in front of us to really comment on. And that's fair. You've commented yourself on how your desire is to work with residents and to talk about changes with respect to buffering and making final determinations. Right now, what we see is essentially three areas being completely cleared, leveled, and structures being built. Doesn't really give us an opportunity to really delve into some of these areas as deeply as we typically would when presented with a plan. Challenge number two is that we all want to redesign your project. The residents want to redesign it, and we want to redesign it, and that's not our role. So, we're left with the idea of trying to make a project that we all would rather see look like something else, less of it, different places for it, different designs for it, et cetera, and the goal being to try and provide you with some level of comment as to what the, this board, reflecting the views of the residents, would otherwise like to see. So, I appreciate Mr. Hartman's suggestion that perhaps we're early in the process in the sense that, as you say, you're anticipating multiple meetings with the ZBA, and perhaps maybe we can come back, you can come back to us as you move through this process, and we can provide some more refined discussion, an opportunity for the residents. Sometimes this forum is a little bit more conducive to back and forth and resident comment than the ZBA is. They are, they're a more formal body. By definition, they have to be. We can be a little bit more open in terms of trying to create a dialogue, and so hopefully that's something you're willing to do. I think, again, I think, again, we're looking at, as everyone has said, the issues of what the sites will look like in terms of Plymouth and its compatibility, our environmental concerns, both in terms of the flooding, as Mr. Mandres, which is a very good point, as well as the desire that we all have to really keep a lot of vegetation and a lot of screening and buffering. That's from ambient light, that's from traffic noise, that's from headlights as they go through, and trying to work with the residents to really look at those sightlines and see what it is they're likely to see. It's something that, it's too early for everybody to figure out right now, and it's something to discuss as we go along. Secondly, of course, we've talked about infrastructure issues, the MOU that did not get signed. And obviously at that point you were talking about 150 units, now it's 163. So there's some additional strain that the select board didn't even address at that point. Again, 13 units, not the end of the world, but nonetheless still more. And third, of course, the safety aspects that everyone has raised. And I will echo everyone, the Prince Street, Cherry Street, Court Street intersection is chaos on the best of days. And it is rarely the best of days around there. So that's something we really strongly recommend gets discussed. There's got to be some collaboration that can come forward out of that. If nothing else, if nothing else, that would be the most significant contribution you could make to this community is working with the town and trying to help us resolve what has been a longstanding problem that is only getting worse. But we appreciate your willingness to listen to these concerns, to hopefully work towards trying to address them. We understand the limits on our ability, we understand 40B and where you are, and we know that we can only ask for the most part, but nonetheless we are asking. So hopefully we can create, we can be a conduit with the community for a dialogue to make this project as good as it can be, given, again, our desire to either not have it or have it be something very different from what you need it to be. So I'm going to just defer from questions at this point, and hopefully we can bring you back as plans get a little bit more defined.
Absolutely. So if it's okay with the board, I'd like to try and respond to some of the, the back and forths and have a bit of a conversation if that works for everybody.
I think that'd be great.
I apologize, I'm gonna be bouncing all over the place, but I don't just want to be a note taker. I want to actually engage in this conversation. So I'll start with the, the safety issue, particularly the Prince and Cherry Street intersection. We have been working with GPI and DPW on the design that was included as part of, I believe it was the CVS mitigation to redesign that intersection, which as was pointed out by numerous people, the Prince and Cherry, it's offset, they don't align, and part of what that new design does is address that concern. It also adds a turning lane for that intersection. So when we did our traffic study, we did it both with and without the updates associated with that, but we do believe that that intersection adjustment will provide a lot of benefit to that area. Just a couple, continuing down on the Court Street, we are committed to the emergency access plan at the Court Street Hedge Road intersection. We worked tightly with Chief Malaguti as well as James Downey in designing that, and as well GPI, and coming up with the solution that works the best in that location. That is also a tricky situation, you have two side streets, Spooner and, the name of the other one escapes me, but there are also two other side streets that are right at that intersection as well, so, you know, we, we actually looked at a number of different iterations with James Downey, and this was the one that made the most sense, and we are committed to providing that. We are providing the turnaround at Prince Street as well, and we do feel that that is something that is beneficial to Prince Street in general. We completely recognize what we are proposing in that area. We'll have big change to the residents on Prince Street and not minimizing it, not overlooking it, and we absolutely intend to work with those residents and continue to work with them on identifying the ways that we can best eliminate or mitigate impacts. Some of the things that have been brought up, we've started working on, particularly the, the headlight concerns coming out of Building Two, absolutely, it's a completely legitimate item, and we've been working with Alex and Katie across the street as well as with Diane next door in looking at what is gonna be the best approach to ideally eliminate that potential pollution from, the light pollution from vehicles. As far as the light pollution related to the parking lot, everything that we will be using will be dark sky compliant. We do think that there are certain areas where the significant topography in the area will, will help us in some of those aspects. The building off of Court Street, so Building One, it is in a bit of a valley there, so while the building is still a larger building than what is directly in the area, it is not at level ground with the homes on Prince Street. And as part of our process with ZBA, and we're happy to, when we come back to Planning Board to present these as well, we have, we can provide sections that show kind of where the existing buildings sit, where the new building will sit, and what those views will like, look like, excuse me. But as far as the definitive plan piece, I mentioned that we are not prescribing certain pieces of it, but the plans themselves are pretty well-defined. Pete and his team have really engineered them to a very high level of detail. The pieces that I was referring to are kind of on the peripheral and where we interact with the neighbors specifically. For instance, I'll mention the Building One again because there, that is a significant visual impact to those neighbors. There is an opportunity to reduce that slope with maybe a small wall and preserve more trees. That's part of what I was mentioning is that what we want to do is get out there and identify what trees would be worth saving. I don't want to draw a line and suggest that the existing condition should stay if it's, if it's not anything worth saving. So that's an area where I was just mentioning as far as a natural buffer, but we, but we are intent on putting up a seven-foot privacy fence. It's a cedar fence with a six-foot cedar fence solid with a one-foot lattice top. It's an attractive fence. We have it in the details of our, of our plan. Providing that on, along the property line where it makes sense. You know, there are some locations where it might not provide anything for either our homeowners or the existing homeowners, so those are the types of areas where we just want to make sure that we are prescribing the appropriate treatment that's gonna actually serve a purpose for, again, our homeowners as well as the existing homeowners. We do have a fiscal impact study that we can provide, and we're happy to talk through. We've brought Marc Fugier onboard as well, who did an analysis which will include the details around the cost, the pricing, as well as the condo fees. It's a balance of the fees associated with services that the town will, will be required when you adding in residential, balancing that with the taxes that are brought in as well as the costs associated with that from a property tax and vehicle tax perspective. So we do have that analysis that we're happy to, to walk through and discuss. And just generally about traffic. So we, we met with the North Plymouth Steering Committee over a year ago, and it was well-attended, it was probably 50 people there, and we got a lot of great feedback at that meeting. And, you know, a lot of what we had been doing in that time in coordination with municipal officials was looking at those concerns in particular, and a lot of that was traffic. And so, as I mentioned, MDM Transportation is on our team, and Bob Michaud from their office will spend time at our, the appropriate ZBA meeting discussing that in detail. We go to the ZBA on Monday, my expectation is that we will set an agenda for the future meeting so that one traffic in the near, what, excuse me, one meeting in the near future will specifically focus on traffic, and at that meeting Bob will be happy to dive into the details as far as turning movements and where cars are coming in and coming out. I recognize that the, the units do all eventually empty onto Court Street, but one of the benefits of this, the layout and just kind of how the property works is that there are three buildings, there are 163 units, but there are also three very separate access points. And so it allows for opportunity for that, those, that vehicular traffic to filter before it, as opposed to leaving from one specific location or intersection. So Bob will be happy to go through details as far as providing context and maybe some other examples of similar communities and what the expected, you know, trips will look The earth removal, Pete, does, do we balance between the three?
Yeah, we're close to zero.
Yeah, so, thanks Pete. So we are as close to balancing the sites as possible with, primarily it's, it's the Ocean View North, the Building One and Building Two. Sandery is largely being built up on the existing, so we did get that to balance as much as If there's anything in particular that I'm not hitting that you guys want to, I'm happy to talk to.
No, I think you've, you've covered, and we're, we'll be looking forward to further updates and more discussion as we go forward in the process.
Excellent, sounds good. I'll work with Lee and Lauren, and we'll, we'll set up their meeting when it's appropriate, relative to things that we hear from both, again, ZBA and CONCOM, because we anticipate that process to start soon as well.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That is the end of our agenda for the evening. Anything further from members of the Planning Board? Seeing nothing?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a second discussion? All in favor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.